Good evening, and welcome to this debate with candidates for Burleigh County Commission. I am Kathryn Spronzenatic, a member of the League of Women Voters, and I will be your moderator today. This debate has been organized by the League of Women Voters, the Bismarck Mandan Chamber EDC, and Dakota Media Access. There are five candidates for Burleigh County Commission, and three have joined us here today. They are Jerry Woodcox, Dustin Goverlo, and Amelia Doll. Our purpose is to provide voters with information about the candidates and their positions on issues affecting the citizens of Burleigh County. Questions have been developed by members of the League of Women Voters and the Bismarck Mandan Chamber EDC. The candidates have not received questions in advance. Viewers watching this debate live on October 6th may submit questions by texting LWV BISMAN152 to the phone number 22333, which will appear on your screen throughout this debate. This debate format is as follows. Each candidate will have 60 seconds to make an opening statement. After opening statements, the candidates will respond to our list of questions. The first response to each question will be rotated between the candidates, and each candidate will have 60 seconds to respond to each question. After the candidates have responded to the question, we invite them to engage in crosstalk, a dialogue about the issues raised for no more than three minutes. We encourage candidates to participate, and any candidate may begin the crosstalk segment. After the final question, each candidate will then have 60 seconds to make a closing statement. Candidates are asked to comply with our time restrictions so we can get to as many questions as possible. Our timer will let you know when your responses are down to 30 seconds, then 10 seconds, and then stop. For the crosstalk segment, they will indicate when we are down to one minute, and then stop. Now, let's get to our candidates. Each of you will have 60 seconds to make an opening statement, and we will begin with Mr. Woodcox.
Thank you, and thank you to the League of Women Voters. These debates or seminars are really great. I think our candidates have a chance to get out and tell what they do and what they are and who they are, so thank you very much for doing that. I think this is the reason I'm running this year. I think this is a very unique election in that the three incumbents, none of which chose to run again, so there'll be three vacancies and three brand-new commissioners. So as a past commissioner, I felt that my experience in running the county commission was needed because I think we'll have a real gap of experienced leaders, and that's what I am as an experienced leader. I'm a fiscal conservative, and I will run the entire county commission that way in the county. I'm for low taxes. 10 seconds, that's all. Okay, but that's what I am. I stand for a very small government, and I ask for your vote.
Thank you, Mr. Woodcox. Mr. Goverlo?
Thank you. My name is Dustin Goverlo. I grew up in Zap, North Dakota, and I am a political consultant by trade. I have been the managing director of the North Dakota Watchdog Network for the last 10 years. I've been heavily involved with state and local campaigns and lobbying efforts for the better part of 15 years total. And, you know, I jumped into this race because it's become very apparent that, as Jerry said, with three positions opening up now, we need to have people that understand the broad dynamics of how government works together and how it's not working together, with emphasis on the latter specifically related to how the city and county have kind of had some disagreements lately, and that's going to end up costing taxpayers more in the long run.
Thank you, Mr. Goverlo. Ms. Doll?
Hi, my name's Amelia Doll. I work for Bobcat in the Publications Department. I've been in Burleigh County for over 10 years now. I grew up in rural southwest Montana, but have been in North Dakota since 2005. I'm running because I feel like we need new voices on the county commission. I used to run the 4H program here in Burleigh County for a number of years, and I've seen what a county commission can do for strong county programs and how it can hinder strong county programs. I'm a mom, I have two little boys, and I think that that's a unique perspective to bring to the county commission.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to the questions. The first question will go first to Mr. Goverlo. Do you advocate for hiring a county administrator or manager? Why or why not?
Yes, I've come to understand that there are some issues in the county because there is not a central point of contact. You've got to, there's modernization issues that are needed, and having a point person that can handle that and make sure that the proper issues are brought forth to the Burleigh County Commission is very important. I would caveat that by saying that we need to make sure that the administrator does not become someone who is essentially a puppeteer of the commission, so we need to make sure that the lanes and the guardrails are in place to ensure that it does not become a position that is essentially a runaway bureaucracy, but overall, I think that there is a need for that sort of a position at the county level.
Thank you, Mr. Goverlo. Ms. Doll?
I agree. I think a county administrator, as we've seen Burleigh County grow and Bismarck City grow, as Dustin mentioned, there is a lack of communication and definite areas for growth between that communication, between the municipalities, and a county administrator could be that person who helps make sure that they are communicating and working together.
Thank you. Mr. Woodcox?
I think we're all in agreement. We certainly need to look at a county administrator. The way the county government is run right now is with portfolio system, and that's very unwieldy, very difficult to handle. If the portfolio holder does well and worked with his department, it works, but if it doesn't work that way, we have a real mismatch of unique ideas that none of them seem to get put together. So we need an administrator that will have input over all of them, and when anybody a constituent or a voter or whatever comes, they can go to him, and they start from there. So instead of going to the highway department, we go to the administrator. Administrator works directly with the department, and I think it'd be much more efficient, save money, save time, and do a much better job of running the county government.
Thank you. We'll now open this issue to crosstalk. Would any of you like to add anything else on the issue of a county administrator or manager?
I would just kind of iterate what Mr. Woodcox said with portfolios. I was a county chair when I worked for 4H, and having a portfolio holder that, you know, our portfolio holder changed every year, and so developing that relationship as a county employee can be tough, and making sure that we're giving the best services to the county.
I do think that it'll be a little more expensive when we start out with a county administrator, but I think in the long run, the county administrator with the staff will be able to coordinate all of the efforts of all the departments, have regular meetings, do some lobbying, work with the city administrator and the city commission, and try and get things put together that are, right now, are a little in a disarray.
Thank you all. This next question will go first to Ms. Doll. Since 70% of Burleigh County residents live within cities, how would you, as a county commissioner, meet the different needs of city and rural residents?
This is actually a funny question because I had someone tell me the other day that they weren't going to even vote in this county election because all of the commissioners lived within cities, all the commission candidates lived within city limits. Rural is a big part of Burleigh County. I think a lot of times we focus on city limits and who lives in the city because, as you said, there's a big population there. But I grew up in the rural area. I grew up on the outskirts of a county. I know what it's like to not have your roads plowed for five days. I know what it's like to feel like you aren't being heard by your county commission. So as a commissioner, I would make sure that I'm going out to those rural areas, meeting with rural residents, and making sure their voices are heard.
Thank you. Mr. Woodcox?
It is correct that 70%, 75%, if I have me at right, are citizens of Bismarck, and they're also citizens of Burleigh County. Let's not forget that Burleigh County is the entire county, but most of them live in the city. So a lot of the development comes from within the city, a lot of the developers, most of our development comes initiated by the city, and so we have to be able to work together. Our planning department has to work well with their planning department. So even though I live in the city, I lived in the county for, I think, 10, 12 years, and was on the county planning board at that time. So I think even though I live in the city, I still represent the county feeling and the county citizens. So I've always been able to have my door open, and my emails are always answered, and so even though I'm in the city, I work hard for the people in the rural areas.
Thank you. Mr. Goverlo?
I think that there is definitely a lack of people running who are living in the rural areas, and so it is incumbent upon any city resident who is elected to understand that your role is to also represent the people that don't have somebody who is from their neck of the woods. You know, in my career, I've spent a lot of years basically advocating for the underdog who does not think that they're being listened to, does not think that there is a solution to their problems. I take calls from random people all the time, have for many years already, asking me what they can do and what can be done. So I think that you have to, as a county commissioner, be willing to chase down some rabbit holes to help people, and sometimes there's no good answer, but you have to do the work.
Thank you. We'll now open this topic to the group. Would anyone like to add anything more on that?
I think one of the main problems we've heard in the past is the ETA and the four-mile limit that is in place, and I think as commissioners, even though we live in the city, we have to respect those people that are out in that four-mile ETA because they really don't have a representative in that area that can do anything with the city, and the city decisions and the city planning department and zoning and permit process is difficult for those people in that four-mile area. So I certainly want to work with those people and try, even though we don't get a vote, we want to work so that we can help them out and do whatever we can to help those people because it's not really fair. And I've always been an advocate of moving the four-mile limit to one mile because I think one mile, we certainly have to have an ETA, but I think the one-mile limit is sufficient.
The extraterritorial zone that Jerry is talking about has been a longstanding problem. I've testified on bills to reform that situation at the state legislature, going back to, I think, the 2013 session. It's very difficult to get the legislature to understand the dynamic of it, but I've called it regulation without representation for many years. The county commission needs to be more proactive about representing its constituents in the extraterritorial zone. I've proposed that the city and county have more joint meetings to resolve issues like that and any other policies that overlap so that the two government entities can coordinate better, and ultimately, if there's more coordination, there should be more efficiencies because you have more people looking at the problem.
Thank you all. This next question will go first to Mr. Woodcox. What type of cost-saving measures would you like to see from the county commission?
Well, like we talked about, the county administrator, I certainly think that that would be, in the long run, will be a way of to more effectively run the county government, more efficiently, more efficiently, and much better for the citizen, for the voters, and for the departments because they will have to work together, and they will meet together and solve our problems together instead of nine different fingers, so to speak, and all working, and not all working against each other, but certainly not as much cooperation as we would like. And the biggest way of saving money for the taxpayers is right now, the county property tax is being debated in the state legislature, and we all want to keep taxes down. We all say that all the time. But I think the main way that that can happen is if we work together with the city and the county and your legislators to reduce the property tax, to get it down to nothing or at least buy down like we did four years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Goverlo?
The issues at the county are like at any other level of government. We need to focus on paying for what we have now rather than adding to it. In my time on the city's special assessment task force, I've discovered that we've got a lot of desire for new things and new roads and new infrastructure while we don't really have a great way that people like to pay for what we have already. If you look back to 2018, we had to increase the city sales tax by a half cent, which I did support. It's the only tax increase I've ever supported because there was never any long-term planning done in order to pay for the things that people want. And focusing on paying for what we've got now and less about finding new things to pay for and have is, I think, the first thing that we need to do in order to save money at all levels of government.
Thank you. Ms. Doll?
I agree. I think kind of what Mr. Woodcox and Mr. Goverlo said, the communication, we've all seen it, between city and county is not what it should be, and that means that taxpayers are paying way more than they should be for the services we're getting. That's one of my first goals as a county commissioner, is to work on that communication and increase our cooperation. It shouldn't be a us versus them, but a we.
Thank you. Let's open up this issue to crosstalk. Is there anything else you would like to add about cost-saving measures from the county commission?
Elected officials at all levels need to be as willing and able to say no as they are to say yes. It's easy to say yes. The hard part of the job is saying no, and there's always lots of people coming to the table wanting more and more for their pet project, but like I said earlier, we've got to have a handle on how to pay for what we have before we worry about generating more.
I think we're going to have to definitely prioritize our projects, not only just highway projects, but IT departments, elections. We have to prioritize where we've got our money, and we've only got so much money to work with, so we have to spend it in the right places and get the best bang for the buck, so to speak. So we have to work hard, and I think that's the job of the commissioners, working together, not only with the county but with the city.
Thank you all. This next question will go first to Mr. Goverlo. What would you do to address the divisiveness that has developed between Burleigh County and the city of Bismarck?
Well, in the last six or seven years, I've been heavily involved in changing the dynamic at the city level. I helped lead the charge on eliminating the city's 37-year-old slush fund TIF district, and since that time, we've completely turned over who is on the city commission, and I get along with all of them now, fortunately, and I have good communications with all of them. We are going to have to be willing to do more work and have more coordination between the two entities in order to fix these problems. I've suggested that we look at all the ways that the city and county have operations that overlap and discuss what the appropriate portion for each entity is, and then also look at that every five to 10 years as well so that we don't get into this difficulty that we're in now.
Thank you, Mr. Goverlo. Ms. Doll?
It all comes back to relationships and sitting and talking to people. Business isn't done behind a computer. It's done face-to-face and getting to know each other and working together. When it comes down to it, the city commission and the county commission are working for the same people. They're working for the taxpayers, and we need to make sure that we are all working together. That means forming relationships and getting to know city departments, county departments, and, as Mr. Goverlo said, working together to find any places where we have overlap that's unnecessary.
Thank you. Mr. Woodcox?
I think we've seen in the last three or four months the results of not having cooperation between the two, and I think we need to reactivate, we have a Government Affairs Committee, and it hasn't met for a long time, and the city has one that's very similar. I think they need to get together, and I think the city and the county commissions have to have a meeting, and not just one, but I think they need to meet quarterly to begin with, maybe even more often, and discuss things like what we both need to work together on. There are a lot of agreements that we have between the city and the county. I think we need to revisit all those contracts and see that they're adequately funded because, like we said before, 70% of the county is Burleigh County, or is city residents, and I think they deserve what they should get. And I think those contracts need to be looked at, revisited, and reassessed the percentages that the city and the county pay.
Thank you. Let's open up this topic to the group. Is there anything else you'd like to add about the relationship between Burleigh County and the city of Bismarck?
You have to have commissioners that are willing to go to the other governmental meetings and know what's going on. There was a comment made at a recent local meeting that nobody came to tell them about a certain project. If you're on an elected body and you're waiting for somebody to come and tell you, you're not doing your job. And so, you know, yes, meetings are boring, but if you get elected and you're agreeing to do the work, and it means more than just showing up twice a month and waiting for somebody to come to you.
I agree. The county commission, as a commissioner, is more than coming to two meetings a month. It's developing those relationships with taxpayers and knowing that you're going to get contacted. There was another comment within the last six months from a county commissioner who was upset that constituents were emailing him about an issue that was important to them. That's not how a county commissioner should be behaving, and that's not good for our taxpayers.
I do think in the past, though, we've had commissions and groups that have worked together and have done good. We have built the jail together with the four political entities, and we worked long and hard to get that done. We have just finished the 911 center, which is a cooperative effort, and so it can be done. We just have to get out there and push so that we start reactivating those liaison committees and go forward from there.
Thank you all. This next question will go first to Ms. Doll, and this came in from a viewer on our text line. What should the Provident Building remodel portray?
This was actually just discussed at the most recent county meeting. I see both sides of the issue right now. There's a debate if the human services should maintain the bottom floor or if there should be some remodeling that happens so that when you walk into the Provident Building, you get a sense of being in Burleigh County government. I think that there are some ideas that could definitely kind of intermingle the two. As someone who's worked in the human services field, consistency of location and staff is very important to a lot of people in the human services field, and if we change that, we're making a big disruption for a lot of people who live in our county. On the same side, or on the opposite side, we do need a county presence. You need to walk in and feel like, oh, this is Burleigh County. I belong here, right? And so I feel like we need to bring both of those visions together to make sure that we have a space that is safe and welcoming to all residents.
Thank you. Mr. Woodcox?
The Provident Life Building has been a moneymaker, so to speak, for the county for a long time, but as rentals change and we lose renters, we've got two open floors right now, and very little opportunity to rent those. So the county is going to make a good move by moving into there. We moved from the main floor of the city-county building over to there, and I think one thing we have to remember is our taxpayers are customers, and when we look at redesigning it, we have to remember parking, age, all kinds of things that we should be dealing with the people that come in and use our services or need our services. I think some of the departments can move up to the third or fourth or fifth floor and use the elevators, but I do think that we still, the feasibility study that they're doing right now, I think we need to wait for the results of that, but I think we need to emphasize access to our constituents.
Thank you.
I think that the whole discussion over the Provident Building and moving county offices over there is kind of the canary in the coal mine on the problem between the two governments. Obviously, in the last 30 years, a lot of effort's been made to deduplicate services and make it easier for people to deal with both the city and the county, and so any changes that are made to the Provident Building in order to facilitate the county need to be done in a way that ensures that people don't have to bounce between the buildings in the middle of the winter when they're used to just doing all their business in the one building now. So not necessarily a bad thing, but we need to make sure that we don't let it get out of hand and reduce and make the experience that people have in dealing with their own government worse.
Thank you. Let's open up this issue to crosstalk. Would anyone like to add anything else about the Provident Building?
One thing we got advantage in the Provident Life Building, we have more parking. We have a flat lot that's north, across the street to the north, and it has parking for like 200 cars. Some of the, most of those are employees now, but there is much more adequate parking for the people who come and need to use the building. So I think that's a good move. Right now, we have no parking at all. We've got three or four spots in the back, and people struggle, particularly handicapped people, to find a spot to get in to pay their taxes or vote or whatever it might be. So I think it's an advantage to the citizens that we do use that building and not rent from somebody else.
I also think it's indicative of what we're seeing in Burleigh County. We're seeing a lot of growth, which means that we have more employees and we need space for those employees. We have a few different entities of the county that have buildings scattered throughout, mostly the city of Bismarck. Having a central location, I believe, is a very strategic move for the county that brings everything together and creates a space that is welcoming for all residents.
If it creates an opportunity to consolidate county operations, it's good. If it's only going to allow for more capacity to grow government, it may not be that good.
I do think the Provident Life Building has a lot more square footage than we're using right now, so when we redesign this and revamp it, we better be careful that we don't just spread and take up the space and misuse it because there's no sense in doing that. If you can continue to rent out a floor or two or whatever, that's even great. That's money in the pocket, so to speak, but we do have to be careful. We just don't move in a new space and expand so everybody's got a bigger office. Well, that doesn't make sense.
And I think the current plan is to still have the one floor. I know they're currently in contract negotiations with the one renter, but I think the plan is to still maintain that floor as a rental unit.
Thank you all. This next question will go first to Mr. Woodcox. Do you feel there are ways for the county to be more transparent with the public? If so, what are they?
That's a difficult one. Everybody, I shouldn't say everybody, a lot of people watch and believe and watch the Monday night meetings, and I'm in favor of having a 10- or 15-minute open mics, so to speak, where people can come in and say what they want, ask questions they want, make comments that they want, and put the county commissioners on the spot, so to speak. That would be an excellent way for people to be more visible. We are not allowed, we're not allowed to advertise, so it's not like you can spend money advertising on what we're doing, but I think it's really hard to make it more transparent. I think all the commissioners have to be very aware of their constituents and answer the phone, call back, respond, do your job.
I like the idea of open-mic night at the county commission, but as somebody who's done as many done as many open records requests and open meetings, challenges to various government entities around the state, number one, we need to make sure that all of our county commissioners are using county email systems that can be searched and acquire information from when required. It's time to get into the 21st century. We also need to upgrade the county website to be more usable and have it be updated on a more regular basis. Meeting agendas, things like that need to be more user-friendly. And then the meetings themselves, I think that we're all going to need to go through training, because some of those meetings don't necessarily meet the smell test of open meetings, Robert's Rules, and they get a little bit chaotic, and I think that there has to be some order to the chaos in order to be effective.
Thank you. Ms. Dahl?
They're actually just awarded the contract to someone to revamp the website, so I'm excited to see that, because that website definitely needs to be revamped. I agree that having official emails that are used is a must. As a constituent, you need to know how to get hold of your elected officials. If it's going to some @AOL.net or compuserve email address, how are you supposed to know that what you are communicating is secure and being looked at? The idea of open mic night is interesting. We've seen that at a few different public meetings, and it can go one of two ways. I think that it is a great way to hold county commissioners accountable and make sure that they understand that, as a commissioner, we are working for the people.
Thank you. Let's open it up to crosstalk. Is there anything else you'd like to add regarding transparency?
I do think going back to, don't want to beat a dead horse, but going back to having a manager and an office that is accessible, like on the main floor of the Providence Life Building, and so people can come in and visit and come in and, not just necessarily, we don't like all complaints, but complaints and constructive criticism. And it would be much easier if we only had one place to go to rather than nine that we've got already, and so I think that would be a much better advantage and much more transparency if that would happen.
Government in general needs to do a better job of alerting the public to what it's doing. I mean, the fact that we have elected officials saying that they don't know what the other level of government is doing is, you know, example A of that fact, and I would support the idea, you know, not necessarily spending money to advertise, but certainly making it more well-known, coordinating with local media as far as what's coming up on the agendas, and making sure that the public understands what is at play at the county level and at all other levels of government.
The county does have a great relationship with Dakota Media Access to get the county commissions out there and available for those to view. I think that is something that we've done that's great. There's a big generation that has no idea how to operate a television to the point of tuning into a local channel, right? So, we need to make sure that we're staying relevant with all of our members of the county.
Thank you all. This next question will go first to Mr. Goverlo, and this is another question from our viewers at home. In light of workforce shortages, what can Burley County do to obtain and retain employees?
So, we have to understand that we're competing with the private sector, and that means that it is going to cost more in order to get the good talent. There's, you know, it's kind of a catch-22 for conservatives when it comes to government employees and that sort of thing, but you want to get the most bang for the buck, and you want to hire the best people that can do the job right the first time, don't have to be, you know, subcontracting it out. So, you know, ultimately, if you're hiring good people, yes, you're going to pay more, but you probably are going to get more out of them, and in the long run, you're not going to need as many of them. And so, we do have to be able to compete and understand the market and understand where people are going and what people expect, because the times are changing.
Thank you. Ms. Dahl?
I agree. I think the employees of Burley County are one of our biggest assets. When you lose an employee, it costs on average $33,000 in their vacancy. That includes advertising for their misposition, somebody else picking up their work, doing interviews, all the lost work that's missing out. As a county resident, we should not be okay with a bunch of turnover on the county level. We want to hire quality candidates, and it needs to be competitive. We are in the state capital, and it's, a lot of our employees go to the state because it's better paying, and so we need to remain competitive while still making sure that we are maintaining our budget and being fiscally responsible.
Thank you. Mr. Woodcox?
I think our county employees are well taken care of now. We've just, the current budget just raised the cost of living and a step, and we have to keep aware of what the market is doing. We do a market study every once in a while to compare what the city's doing and the state is doing, but we have to take care of our employees. We have an excellent retirement system, and I think that that keeps us aware of what's going on. If we lose people to the oil patch, which we did eight, 10 years ago, that's really, was really tough, because they were getting double what we were paying, but we have to be effective with what we're doing. We have to take care of those people, keep our salaries up there, and prioritize our budgets. If we have to cut down on something else, we have to take care of our employees and keep them there, because like we were saying, it's very expensive when we lose somebody, and talent is hard to find, and so we've got to take care of the ones we got and keep that up.
Thank you. Let's open that question to the group. Is there anything else you'd like to add about recruitment and retention of county employees?
I think in the past, the county, it's been, Jerry, I believe you were on the commission at the time, it's been about five years that the county moved to a self-pay model for insurance, and this allowed the county to be a little more agile with insurance, and it actually ended up saving taxpayers money, because we weren't paying as much for those benefits, and it made it more cost-effective for our employees to carry county insurance. And so, making sure that we have opportunity, or we're looking for opportunities like that to save money, but also make sure that the services and the pay that we are providing our county employees is top-notch.
Thank you all. This next question also came from our viewers at home, and it will go first to Ms. Dahl. Do you feel Burley County should pay $2.1 million toward the new Bismarck-Burley Public Health Facility? Why or why not?
So, this, I think, has been alluded to a few different times here tonight. I think this goes back to the lack of communication and, from both sides, right? People sitting in their corner, waiting for someone to come and talk to them. If anything of the last two years have shown us, it is that public health is extremely important. We just went through a global pandemic. It's still kind of lingering on the outskirts. Do I feel like we just need to raise taxes and pay the $2.1 million? Not necessarily. I feel like, as county commission, we need to look at opportunities. Are there ARPA funds that we can use? Are there payments that we can work out? $2.1 million is a lot of money to just raise without that communication.
Thank you. Mr. Woodcox?
This goes back to the contracts that we have with several entities, city-county-wide, and this contract was a 5% Burley County participation, 95 city. I don't think that's fair, but I don't think they should plop it on the county that we, all of a sudden, we are supposed to kick in $2.1 million. I think that has to be eased into, but I do think that contract has to be reviewed, along with the contract with the 911 center. I think that was a 60-40 split, where the county paid 40% and the city 60%. So, there are so many variables in there that I think they should ease that up so that Burley County is paying more of a fair share, and you've got to remember that 70% of the citizens are from Bismarck that are in Burley County. So, I think we have an obligation to pay proper healthcare for the rural citizens of Bismarck and for the city of Bismarck, so I think it has to be looked at and it has to be eased into, not just a one-time shot in the arm.
Thank you.
The public health building specifically, I believe a lot of this goes back to the bad blood that was caused when the city sold its existing public health building for a loss. There was a controversy back in, you know, going back to 2016, and recently, that building was sold, I believe, to U. Mary, in order to, you know, do something different with it. Obviously, there was, there was failure to communicate on both the city and county level. The city did not make it clear to the county what it was going to expect early on, and the county wasn't paying attention, I guess. So, neither one of them were doing their jobs on that particular piece. You know, going forward, we need to make sure that all of these things are appropriately prorated, that the entities that are getting their portion out of them are paying their portion, and as I've been saying for a while, we need to look at all of these cost-sharing, split dynamics, you know, put everything on the table and renegotiate it all.
Thank you. Let's open that up. Is there anything, anyone would like to add about the funding of Bismarck-Burley Public Health?
Clearly, there's, 5% is obviously not the appropriate number, considering that the county outside of Bismarck is 23% of the population and of the taxable value. The city dropping a bomb on the county with that big ask all of a sudden was not good communication, but clearly, there are situations where one side or the other is getting a better deal than it should, and in order to make sure that neither side feels like they're getting snookered on any particular thing, we need to look at everything and make sure that it's all split the appropriate way based on math.
Math. Based on math. I think that is an excellent way to say, the county can't think that we should be getting services that we aren't paying for. Taxes are crappy. Nobody likes to pay taxes, but everybody likes the services that come from paying taxes. And so, I think this all goes back to what we've been saying all night. It comes back to communication. Yes, from what we hear from the commission, it was a bomb dropped, but I also feel like the commission maybe wasn't listening to the bomb sirens. So, it's, both entities are at the table here.
I do think that, like, the jail contract that we have between Burley Morton and Bismarck Mandan is reviewed every two years by contract, and so they reassess the expenses at the end of that two-year period, and if Morton County needs to pay more or they need to pay less, they review that and change it. So, I think this should be done, the same thing with the, not only the health department, but the 911 center. There's several others that work together that we need to review those contracts, and we need to keep up to date. We've got to just do it.
Thank you. This next question will go first to Mr. Woodcox. How would you vote if the city of Bismarck requests to reestablish its Renaissance Zone program, and why?
Well, the county has nothing to do with the Renaissance Zone. It's a city project, and I was in favor of the Renaissance Zone for a long time, and primarily, it was working with older buildings, the old hotels and the, and the old buildings that were shut down and weren't being used for anything, and they would, it allowed a reduced tax rate so that developers or private owners could come up and open up a little shop and make it, make it go, and they got a break on their taxes. But as this changed, we started to spread the zone out, and the zone started to include new properties and new buildings, and I don't think that's fair. I mean, that doesn't, that doesn't make it fair for the people, the developers who are developing something in other areas. So, I think I would vote for it if it had some very, some good restrictions in there that allows for certain areas and certain types of buildings. I think it has to be more restrictive than what it is, but I would sponsor it or would vote for it if those, if those specifics were in there.
I have lobbied in opposition to the various ways that the state has expanded Renaissance Zone every time that that has come up at the legislature. I have generally opposed any tax incentive program that gives one group a benefit different than another. I also have supported eliminating greenfield special assessments, which is another tax benefit for specific developers. I've served on the Renaissance Zone authority since 2019 and have helped guide a few changes in the plan prior to it being rejected by the county, specifically measuring return on investment correctly and increasing the threshold requirements to qualify. So, clearly, there, if it is going to ever come back in any form, it needs to be done in a very different way.
Thank you. Ms. Dahl?
I support the Renaissance Zone program. I think it, as the other two candidates have mentioned, there are some things that needed to be ironed out and addressed that necessarily aren't the reason the Renaissance Zone was originally established. However, it brings in a good opportunity for us to get developers in certain areas where we would otherwise have vacant lots or vacant buildings. We know that businesses being in an area bring people in, right? If I can walk to a place and get all of my business done within walking distance, that's a benefit to me versus having to drive all over town, right? And so, I would support the Renaissance Zone coming back, as my fellow candidates have recommend, or have suggested, with a few caveats.
Thank you. Let's open that to crosstalk. Would anyone like to add anything regarding the Renaissance Zone program?
I do think that the, I think the last contract ran out, and the four political entities had to approve it, and if one denied it, it went down, and so Burley County was the one who did not approve it, and it did go down, but I think they should revisit that, like I, like I said, with, with new restrictions and a new program, so to speak, and reactivate that program with restrictions, so it isn't, it isn't a fair, unfair program, has to be fair, but yet, I think we need to revitalize and keep Bismarck growing downtown and out in the, out in the hinterland, so to speak, but I think it does have to have restrictions, and it wouldn't be a bad idea for Burley County to revisit their vote.
During the 2017 legislative session, I lobbied in favor of the bill that reformed both Tiff District and Renaissance Zone requirements to have that approval by local political subdivisions, because there's no reason that one political subdivision should be able to, for lack of a better word, steal revenue from another one. However, you know, it comes down to communications there. There was discussion when the county rejected the most recent renewal, there was talk about how it never intended to be used for empty lots. If you read the original language passed in 1999, it specifically said that new build was approved. I think that the city has done a bad job of communicating to the county what it actually does. One of the proposals that I got approved by the subcommittee on the Renaissance Zone was to offer a seat to the county commission officially. That was not accepted at that level, but I think that if the city wants to bring it back someday, it's going to have to allow the other political entities to have a seated table and have a say.
If I understand it correctly, though, it's dead, right?
Yes.
Thank you all. This next question will go first to Mr. Goverlo, and it comes from our viewers at home. How will the county continue to maintain roads and infrastructure in current economic conditions?
Well, the county is going, will have to ensure that its contracts are not exceeding what they otherwise should. I know that both at the city and county level in recent years, there's been more cases of the bids coming in significantly higher than what the engineers had predicted. We clearly have to have a better idea on what those costs are going to be when we're putting together those projects before it even goes to bid, and like I said before, we need to make sure that we are focusing on maintaining what we have rather than building new. We can't be constantly building new roads when the old roads are deteriorating and people are complaining about their cars getting damaged. We've got to prioritize what we have over wanting more new things. We've got to prioritize what we have over wanting more new things.
I agree. Prioritization is key, just like when you're talking about a family budget. There's, everybody wants to go on vacation every month, right? But you have to prioritize where you're spending that money and put the important things first. Pay for what you have versus what you want, and making sure that we are focusing on all areas of the county. I know that some people up in the Wing area feel like they get forgotten about, right? Because they aren't in the Bismarck area. We need to make sure that we're maintaining the roads that we have and prioritizing the highest priority roads.
I think it's going to be very difficult with the new bids coming in. As mentioned, they're coming in higher than we expected by a long ways. And I think that's, with the oil price, now it's changed the last few days, and oil prices are going to go back up again. So who knows what's going to happen? We definitely have to prioritize, I think, in the immediate, near future, in the next year or two. Burley County does have money that came in from the state and the feds that they're sitting on with. There was real restrictions on how we could, how the county could spend it. Those restrictions have been loosened up now so that I think some of that money could go back to the county to take care of roads. The townships are responsible for their own roads, and everybody seems to tend to forget that. But the townships are responsible for their own roads. The county roads are the county's responsibility, and I think they need to maintain those for sure and participate with the townships. And everybody has to pay their fair share, so to speak. But I don't think we need to raise taxes in order to do that.
Thank you. Let's open that up to the group. Would anyone like to add anything on infrastructure? If not, we'll move on to some of our final questions. So we discussed the extraterritorial, the ETA, the extraterritorial area a little bit earlier. Let's revisit that. This will go to Ms. Dahl first. What is your position on the currently negotiated extraterritorial area agreement with the city of Bismarck?
So earlier, when we were talking about the four-mile radius, reducing that down, I feel like those members or those residents in that extraterritorial zone really get an unfair shake. We saw it at the budget hearings where we had two constituents get up and talk about how they're assessed value, they didn't feel like matched the value, and they are in that ETA zone, so it's a weird dynamic, right? I feel like that area should be reduced. As Bismarck is expanding and absorbing more of that space, we need to be mindful of what is in that radius and how we are representing constituents living in that area.
I do think the boundaries of the ETA are adjusted periodically, and they're not on a regular basis. Every three or four years, if we see developments coming that are brand-new and they've changed their dynamics in that area, they'll change the ETA. And that has, that's an agreement between the city and the county. The four-mile restriction is way too high. But when you look at Bismarck expanding and picking up and absorbing these developments that have been there for 20 years, and now they're coming in and they have septic systems and they have rural roads, they don't have curb and gutter. So it makes it very difficult for the city planning and the county planning to pick those up and provide adequate services. So we do have to be very careful. But still, I think that four-mile ETA is too long, too far out.
The, I believe that the city and county have come to an agreement on actually only using that authority in a two-mile range for now. But the biggest problem is the lack of representation. Without the, even though that there is county representation and ETA resident representation on the Planning and Zoning Committee, the final determination is made by the city commission. And the city commission has to be convinced that it's time to be more proactive about coordinating with the county and the county commission on making sure that the people who are in the ETA are represented, even though they can't vote for the people that are regulating them. This is a large issue. It comes down to comprehensive planning as well. The city needs to be very clear as to when and how and why they plan to annex certain parts that are not in the city limits and make it clear what that timeline is so that people know what to expect down the road.
Thank you. Let's open that last question to crosstalk. Is there anything you would like to add about the ETA?
I think it all gets down to the same thing we've been talking about, is cooperation between the city and the county. And currently now, I don't think the city commissioners or the county commissioners ever meet together. And this is only one thing. The ETA is one. The city health department is another. Planning and zoning is another. We have to look forward, and we have to look realizing that we're a big metropolitan area, and we all need representation. And yet, we want quality services at low cost. So that's a very, very difficult time, a line to ride so we can do the best job we can. So you have to have adequate people in there taking care of things, and we have to have cooperation amongst the two entities and Morton County and Mandan because we're a metropolitan area.
The county needs to make it clear to the city that kind of being a bull in a china shop and just pushing itself around is not acceptable on this or anything else. And that's why county, city residents have a vote in both the county and the city. In order to have the proper checks and balances, you've got to take care of these overlapping issues and not just constantly have this grudge between the two entities. You actually have to do something about it because just being upset about it doesn't do anything. So let's see some action rather than just words.
Thank you all. Thank you, candidates. That was our last question. You will now each have 60 seconds to provide a closing statement, and we will start with Mr. Woodcox.
I want to thank again the League of Women Voters for putting this on. One thing, I've been a commissioner before, so I think my experience will be invaluable. With the new election coming up and three new commissioners coming on, I think it's imperative that we have experience in there. One thing we didn't talk about that I'd like to mention is we don't, we don't do any lobbying with the legislature as the county is concerned. The county needs to have our manager in there, the city manager, work together, do lobbying for the state legislature, just like talk, reduce property tax. We should be having a joint voice, so to speak, to take care of that and reduce our property taxes. But I'm a fiscal conservative, always have been. I own a small business, and I know how it is to make a payroll and how tough it is. So I would appreciate your vote.
The challenge that this next county commission is going to have is the fact that it's going to have three of five members being brand-new. And so in order to make sure that the voters are properly representative, we need people that understand how the county works, how the county works with the other levels of government, state and local, and the city, parks, schools, et cetera. My experience with the lobbying in the legislature since 2009, I have networked with most of the people that are at the state level who are involved with local government control and that sort of thing. I've been involved with the city now for five, six years. I've gotten to know a lot of city staff and have a good relationship with them. Being able to talk about the facts and not just bloviating on opinion is important when it comes to getting things done. And we need people that operate in the real world and not just some rhetoric that doesn't actually move the needle.
I feel like we, while there may be challenges having three new members on the commission, I think there's also great opportunity for our county. Getting fresh voices, fresh views, people who are willing to sit down and listen and work with different municipalities is key to Burley County moving forward. I have been a county employee. I have worked with the counties. I have worked with the school board. I've worked with the city. I have the experience of working with a bunch of people to bring everybody together and get the best outcome for us all.
Thank you all. I wish to thank Dakota Media Access, the Bismarck Mandan Chamber EDC, and the volunteers from the League of Women Voters for organizing this debate. Thank you to the voters for taking the time to learn more about the Burley County Commission candidates and issues. This program will air several times on government access streaming and television platforms and will be available for online viewing at freetv.org in the days leading up to the November 8th election. Before we close this debate, we remind you that you will need a form of identification to vote in North Dakota. You can find ID requirements and additional voting information on the websites or at the offices of your county auditor and the North Dakota Secretary of State. Thank you.